...to speak at this time under public comment. Okay, thank you. I'd like to call upon Mr. Daley, our city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Tonight celebrates the last official meeting for Arvada City Manager Craig Koshen as the city manager, and so we want to take a few minutes tonight to recognize Craig's achievements. It was about 48 years ago that the citizens of this community adopted by vote a city charter. And when they did that, they essentially formed what would be the government for the future. For nearly 25 years of that 48 years, Craig Koshen has served with distinction for this city, not only in the city manager's office, but also as a lowly staff employee. He worked his way up. It's an exciting time for Craig because he's going to get to spend his retirement with his lovely wife Lois, with his son Aaron, Aaron's close friend Bridget. I know that Craig's got some home projects that he wants to work on, as usual. I know that Craig, you know, wants to do a lot of traveling, and certainly he's going to have time to relax. This is a pressure-filled job, as you all know. But before we let go, Craig go into retirement, I want to explain mostly to the citizens that might be watching this on KETV or on the streaming video, what in the world does a city manager do? The organizational chart for the city of Arvada properly has the citizens of Arvada at the top of the chart. That's where they should be, right? Then you have the mayor and the council, who were elected by the citizens, and the mayor and the council essentially set the budget, they affirm what policies we're going to be doing, and they set a long-term fiscal vision for the city. The job that the city manager has to do is, with limited resources, the city manager must operate the city and decide how best to provide those services to members of the public. Now, the city manager can't do this alone. So, in Arvada, we're so lucky to have a very fine staff of employees that have worked with Craig over the many years. He has a very fine staff in his office: Deputy City Manager Bill Ray, Assistant City Manager Vicky Ryer, Executive Assistant and Right-Hand Person Shelley Herb, and there's others, too numerous to mention. But I know Craig would tell you that there's no way that he could do this job without the able assistance of the people in his office and the people in the organization. Now, if one was to compare the city of Arvada with a private corporation, you might say that the city council is basically the board of directors, the city manager is essentially the chief executive officer that deals with the day-to-day operations. And there's been so many projects that Craig has sponsored, hosted, and pursued with the city council to make this the great city that it is, a city that everyone wants to live in, work in, and play in. I know the council wishes to make some remarks tonight, but I'd ask you to just take a couple minutes, and the staff of KETV has prepared a short video that we'd like to show you right now. Let's take a look.
Where do you begin when summing up the contributions of City Manager Craig Koshen to the city of Arvada? His awards and accomplishments are many, but it's the respect of his colleagues that speaks volumes about Craig Koshen's leadership and character.
They don't come any better, in my opinion. Craig is a quiet person with a great heart. He influences the lives of many people.
Craig is amazing, both in terms of energy and his presence, and there isn't a part of the community that I can think of that Craig hasn't been able to establish deep and lasting ties to.
Craig's retirement in 2011 leaves many pondering his impact on Arvada. He first joined the city in 1972, a time of rapid growth for Arvada.
That growth occurred in a time when municipalities, and Arvada was no different, were relatively unsophisticated in dealing with developers. And as a result, a tremendous amount of our growth happened without accompanying infrastructure, and in particular parks, trails, open space, and appropriate recreational facilities.
Craig made a difference.
In many respects, Craig is at the heart of the city's park system. In 1974, Arvada voters approved two ballot questions. The first ones that were approved in over 70 years: one built the Arvada Center, and the other ballot question authorized 32 parks to be constructed, and that formed the nucleus of our modern park system. Craig was involved in not only the election and garnering community support, but also in the design and the construction.
Along the way, Arvada found itself in need of a city manager, and beginning in 1976, and for nearly seven more years, Craig steered the course of the city. At age 31, he was the youngest city manager in the nation of cities over 50,000 in population. In 1983, he left for Oakland, California, where he served as Assistant City Manager, then City Manager, for a total of 14 years.
Oakland taught me patience, and necessarily so. It also taught me about the maturity of politics.
But in March of 1997, Arvada wooed him back from Oakland.
I really think that in the almost 20 years that I served on Planning Commission and City Council and as mayor, I probably participated in thousands of votes, but the most important decision that I participated in was the decision to have Craig come back to Arvada as city manager, and I'm very, very happy that we found the right person. He did a masterful job at creating a team here at the city that really does incredible work in delivering services to the public.
He inspires and allows people to develop the road to get to the end without dictating what that road is.
The completion of 72nd Avenue, the separation of the railroad tracks at Grandview and Wadsworth, the Van Biver Project, all major accomplishments under Craig's watch.
All of those issues require tremendous amounts of work and advocacy and cajoling and getting all of the different parties, state and federal parties, together, the people who have to write the checks, as well as finding the city funds and budgeting for that. And pulling off some of those really big infrastructure projects is something that I hope he's very proud of because he had a major role in getting those done.
Arvada's business community benefited too.
Craig is a master at working with our business community. He can talk to the CEO of a corporate headquarters looking to relocate here, or he can talk to the hot dog guy trying to figure out what his story is and what is genuinely interested in what brought him to this community. Craig can relate to anybody. People like him because they can trust that he's true to his word, what he says, he will do, he follows through and gets it done. He creates relationships. I think that's what it all boils down to, is he's an honorable and trustworthy person, and they like doing business with him.
An iconic image for Arvada, historic Old Town, matured under Craig's leadership.
We've always had an Old Town, but we have a much stronger Old Town as a destination presence because of Craig's involvement in the Old Town Renaissance Project. His key leadership in getting the library to locate, the redevelopment of Old Town Square, the streetscape improvements along Old Wadsworth and Grandview Boulevard are all a result of a vision that Craig brought when he returned to the city.
Arvada's growth sought changing neighborhoods, and the need for new schools in those neighborhoods demanded guidance.
Craig's moral compass says that education is central to quality of life in any community. So, from day one, when I became superintendent, Craig was an absolute supporter of funding elections, changing schools, the importance of education. He promoted our teachers, our principals. He knew that education was central to the quality of community life.
The list of important milestones reached under Craig's tenure goes on and on: the conversion of rocky flats to a wildlife refuge, the celebration of the building of the Gold Line rail station, and an important historic milestone too: the 100th anniversary of Arvada's incorporation in 2004.
One of the things that was done at the time of the 100-year celebration was a list of the 100 most influential people in the history of Arvada. And I think in 90-some-odd years, when it's the 200th anniversary of the city of Arvada, and if the citizens of this community put together a new list of the 100 most influential people, I'm certain that Craig will still be on that list.
Rick Osmus and Sherry Knobach of KETV who produced that video. As council can tell, but the studio audience or the audience out there at KETV may not see, there's a number of employees here tonight, and so I'm going to ask for just a moment if the employees that are present tonight, if you would please stand. Very good. Okay, thank you so much. You can be seated. Craig, if you don't mind, would you please come up here? This is your night, and the employees have gotten together and have prepared a book and made some notes in that book, some thoughts about you and working with you, and I'd like to present that to you right now. So, please accept this on behalf of grateful employees who you have served, sir. Okay, so now, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to the council, because I know that you have comments for Mr. Koshen, and I presume that he has some thoughts of his own to share tonight. Thanks so much.
Well, Rachel, would you like to go ahead?
So, we decided on council that the longest-serving member of council who has worked with you, Bob, and the shortest-serving member that has worked with you, myself, would present to you a few items, and one of which is a proclamation by the city of Arvada for you that I have the honor of reading. It states that whereas Craig Koshen has had a distinguished 39-year career in public administration, when first appointed Arvada City Manager in 1976, Craig Koshen was the youngest city manager in the nation in cities of over 50,000. He was instrumental in developing a strategic planning process known as targeting, which was nationally recognized for innovation, and worked tirelessly and successfully to create an urban renewal district. And, whereas during his tenure with the city of Oakland, Craig Koshen led the city during crises, including the devastating 1989 earthquake, which caused the collapse of a major freeway, and the 1991 urban wildfire that killed 25 people and consumed some 4,000 dwellings. He also negotiated the return of the Oakland Raiders football team. And, whereas, upon his return to Arvada, as city manager, Craig Koshen has made innumerable positive impacts on the community, not the least of which was instigating the revitalization of historic Old Town Arvada. And, whereas, under Craig Koshen's leadership, thousands of acres of open space have been acquired, expansions of City Hall, the Arvada Center for the Arts and Humanities, and the Indiana Shops have been completed, dozens of significant public works projects have been completed, including the grade separation of the Wadsworth Boulevard and the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad, the two-plus-mile connection of West 72nd Avenue between Pierce and Kipling Streets, and the Van Biver Flood Control Project. Many other significant projects have been initiated, including the Gold Line and the Jefferson Parkway. And, whereas, beyond his work on behalf of the Arvada community, Craig Koshen has been committed to increasing Arvada's influence both in the Denver metropolitan area and at the national level, and whereas for after nearly four decades of dedicated and loyal public service, Craig Koshen is retiring. The Arvada community and so many individuals and organizations have been incredibly fortunate to have benefited from his expertise, his boundless energy, his passion for excellence, and his generous and kind nature. Now, therefore, the Arvada City Council, on behalf of the entire city of Arvada family, wish Craig Koshen and his family the very best in the future, dated this 26th day of September 2011, signed by the mayor and all members of city council.
Lois kind of slipped in there. I'm sure the camera wasn't focusing on you, so why don't you introduce Lois to the people at home?
Well, this is Lois Koshen. She's my life partner, the mother of our two children, and the person who makes my life run, along with Shelley Herb, of course.
Why don't we have our city council comments at this time? I had asked Mr. Williams if he would like to begin, although everybody's pushing their light to... Do you want to go ahead, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Boy, so many wonderful things have been said about you, Craig, and to see you standing there with your life partner and your greatest supporter, Lois, of course, is very touching because of how important partnerships are, how much you put a value on family, and just how you have carried that forward in terms of everything you do. And we all talk about the phrase "paying it forward," but, boy, Craig, what you and Lois have done for this community and what you have done professionally for us, Craig, has truly paid it forward for this community for decades yet to come. Your professionalism, your knowledge, your two-long speeches, your willingness to put up with inept council members and to take us behind the woodpile and straighten us out a little bit when needed was greatly appreciated. I think maybe you can finally wind down. Thank you.
Mr. Dyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Former Mayor Feldman brought up in the tribute an item that I also want to comment on. Along with Ken, Bob Free, Shelley Cook, Don Allard and I were among those that hired Craig when his return to Arvada. And I think back to that time shortly before I was elected, I mean literally like a week before I was elected in 1991, the city manager quit, so we had to hire a new city manager. And I thought, well, okay, that's all right, but in the next four or five years, we had two more city managers, fortunately. The second one has stuck around a long time as well, and then we had two more city managers and an urban renewal director. After a period of like five years of that much turnover of senior management, it tended to cause a bit of an image problem, I think, for Arvada. And when I think of Craig, there's one word that really comes to my mind first, and that is stability. He brought stability to this community, to this organization. We could focus on getting things done. And all the things you saw in the tribute came about because we had stability, finally. We had gone through so many things in a period of five or six years that I know all of us that are here now and were there during those times can appreciate that. And that's something that, to me, is going to be an enduring legacy, because we wouldn't be where we are today without stability. Thank you, Craig.
Rachel.
It's very difficult trying to find the words to be able to summarize such a fantastic career and what a great impact that you've had to our community. So, in these kinds of times, I look to other people who are far better at saying it. And I did come across one phrase by Albert Einstein who said, "Try not to become a man of success, but rather to become a man of value." And that really spoke to me because that pretty much sums up you to me and to our community, is that you're truly a man of value, and we value you and all of your contributions here, and as a result of that, you have become such a tremendous success, and we appreciate you.
Mr. McGough.
Thank you. Craig, I'd mentioned in one other setting earlier this week about some of your rules for city manager. I just want to make reference to one. Craig has said in a joking manner on several occasions that one of the skills of a city manager is to be able to count to four. What he means by that is that he needs to have the confidence of four council members, and that at any time he would lose the confidence of four council members, he would be looking for another job. A cynic might think that someone who has that as a little saying might be tempted to cut corners, to assess the political landscape, to do things that would be expedient rather than right. That's never been the case with you, Craig, in the four years that I've served on council with you. You have always acted on principle. You have not acted with the notion of what might be acceptable to the council. You have challenged us on principle. You have offered to us ideas, initiatives, that are in the best interest of the city, the long-term interest of the city. I like the way Superintendent of School Cindy Stevenson put it on the videotape. She talked about you having a moral compass. I think those are very good words, a moral compass. Not only have you acted as the moral compass for the city and provided an inspiration to the city council members, you've done the same for the staff members that you have hired and trained, and you have hired and/or trained the majority of the management staff in the city. Your legacy will live on through these staff whom you have trained, supervised, and most importantly, have inspired toward excellence in serving our citizens. I want to thank you, Craig, for all that you've done, and I want to wish you and Lois and your family the very best in retirement.
Shelley Cook.
Well, when the city hired Craig, I knew we were getting somebody who was forward-looking, and that's pretty important. But by the way, in that video, we got lots of examples of that. I just wasn't sure I got the part about quiet, you know? He's not somebody... In fact, what I didn't know about Craig, and that has turned out to be critical, was the power of his ability to communicate, and whether it's been on something like 72nd or the Parkway or the Gold Line or changes that we're undertaking as an organization, I just can't imagine we would have made the progress we would have had it not been for your ability to frame the issues, to talk about the ramifications and the benefits of a course of action, and to do it extremely persuasively. So, I wanted to highlight that piece. Second was, when I was thinking about Craig and all that he's done, the depth of his commitment and his capability. I mean, you just can't get into public service, and especially not in a high-profile position like Craig has, without gathering your share of detractors. Craig has fewer than most, by far, but even among those, I've never seen a question of his competence or of his passion or that he was getting bored or neglectful or anything. I mean, people recognize the capability and the absolute adroit skill we have here. And then third was mentioned by Mark McGough, his ability to mentor and develop employees in the organization as a consequence. So, I've seen several programs, internships. Just recently, he swapped out the division heads for utility and public works so that, you know, those individuals would gain knowledge of the other function and would benefit personally, but also as an organization. And then finally, and this was alluded to also in the video and in comments, Craig's the trust with which he is held in the community, and especially by our sister agencies, has really gone a long way in furthering Arvada and its goals. Just recently, we were negotiating with the school district, the city was, regarding school closures, really difficult stuff, and in the difficult work of proposing an alternative and having it received openly, I think that the relationship that he has cultivated with the school district, with superintendent, with everybody, was critical in being able to move that forward. So, you know, I haven't said it enough, Craig, but no matter what, when I've been resisting or countering or going with you on a proposal, I am grateful to have had you as our manager. Thank you.
Mr. Allard.
Having known Mr. Koshen probably for longer than anybody in this room, I concur to everything that's been said. Mr. Koshen, I've had a personal meeting, and I've already expressed to him my appreciation and my strong feeling for having known him for a number of years. The only thing I can add in addition to what's already been said, and which I certainly concur, is that, but for Craig Koshen, I don't think the urban renewal project would have ever, would ever have happened. Took a long time to get it finally done, but certainly South Arvada is, I think, can be laid directly at Craig Koshen's doorstep, more so than any one person in this whole community. And I wish you well, Mr. Koshen.
I wanted to go last today because I went first at the employee event on Friday night, and that was kind of a... Craig's been able to describe what he wanted his last week to be like, and that event was just for you, for the people in this room, the employees. It was hot dogs and beer, and grateful employees turned out. I think Shelley really hit it on the head when she described what a great employee's city manager he's been. The city manager finds himself in a really tough spot because he's got to please the people that are budget-minded, and yet he's got to keep 600 or 700 people happy. And if they're not happy, nobody's happy, because nothing gets done. If employees are grumping and the citizens are treated in a short way, then nothing works right. And I learned the first year I knew Mr. Koshen as a city manager that he is, his number-one loyalty is to you, the employees. And I can see several people that are looking back at me that have benefited personally by his growth philosophy. He's allowing you to grow. I remember when Don Wick was a sergeant, I think, and he came to work in the city manager's office for a year. And I can think of so many other people that took a different job. It was a career step. Sometimes it's a gamble, sometimes it's a stretch, and the employee maybe found that it was a learning curve that had to be met, but that employee got to grow. Because over 30 years or 20 years that that person is working here, the career path of that person just changed because the manager was willing to take a risk or allow you to grow in that way. And I know several of you personally have reached rewards because of that. In the description of what a city manager does, in case there's somebody watching doesn't know, the manager is a full-time representative to various agencies and cities and state. Of course, the mayor- Of course, the mayor participates. But when we have some technical issue like metro wastewater sewer charges or water negotiations, the citizens sitting here often don't have those skills. So the manager has to do that. And Craig's just done a marvelous job of being able to reach out to sister agencies and cities, but also, at the same time, then come here that night and work with us on local issues and knowing where the landmines are and what the politics are, how to get something done, and how to make progress. When I first met Craig, he was the new city manager. And the, we haven't, you haven't witnessed this in Arvada for a long time, but when, if there's four people that are deadlocked against three, it's really hard to get something done. And he navigated through that just fine, although I think, when he left in '83 to go to Oakland, I said personally, "Are you sure this is the right thing to do? You've got a great job. You can stay here as long as you want to." But he went because it was a career move. So a guy who stays in the same city for 20 or 25 years maybe can't get another job. So he said, "I need to have another city on my resume." And so he went to Oakland. And I was on the city council when, in '96 or '97, we found ourselves in a really unhappy place. Our city manager had resigned. Our urban renewal bonds were about to go in or could go into default any day. We had hired a developer who took a bunch of money of ours and didn't do anything and left town. We thought about suing him, but it was a rotten economy like this. The guy had, was gone. We were embarrassed. We had brown fields down there. Nothing was happening in our urban renewal area. Our council was going through a time when we were on national TV because we were not functioning in a great way. It was just, we were, this was, it was really hopeless. You never knew when the TV cameras were going to show up and there'd be some crowd here that was beating us up about something. And I had been staying in touch with Craig, and so I asked him if he would be interested, and he was. So it didn't take very long before we had a majority to make an offer and get him back here. And it was almost worth any price to get stability at that time. Mr. Dyer's word "stability" is really, best describes what a city can go through. And I can't, I can't, I can't direct you to any other town that's going through that right now. But when the town is, you know, one step away from a recall election on any given issue or the headlines are focused on local politics, something's wrong. And, you know, we really haven't had that in the last 14 years. We've been, we've been able to do business, and we're a very, very lucky city for that reason. I think I'm, I don't want to go on too much longer. I have, one of our employees constantly says to me, "Oh, thanks for bringing Craig back. That was the best move you ever made." And it really was a great move for our city. So Craig gets to go out on his own terms now. You know, I've thought about this. I'm sure he's going to wonder how to fill his time a little bit because you go from these action-packed moments to full retirement. But I'm sure if anybody can do it, he can. We have a wonderful plaque here that's from the entire city. And so I have the honor of being able to present this to you since I'm in this chair. It states, "In grateful recognition of the profound and lasting impacts you have brought to Arvada and surrounding regions as Arvada city manager..." It's got both terms, 1976 to 1983, and 1997 to 2011. And it was chosen because we thought it would best fit your decor in your cabin, as somebody's calling it. So I get to give this to you.
Two hours, Craig.
It's all yours.
It's my turn. Well, I think I probably now have found a full-time job for retirement. And that would be correcting the record. No, I need to say, well, first of all, I don't have a prepared speech. And actually, I'm a bit taken aback. We had a picnic in the park on Friday night, and I actually thought that was it. And I thought, this week is like, whatever, and bye-bye. So, you'll excuse me if I don't have my thoughts well-organized. But I do want to say that when Bob Free called me in 1996 and asked if I would think about coming back, his first call was not opportune. And that was really August of '96. And we had an election coming up, and the former government was on the ballot. And it was, I did not want the city manager's transitoriness, as it were, to be part of that conversation. And so after the election was concluded and the former government was retained, Bob called back because it kind of coincided with an unsuccessful national search and said, "Well, how about now?" And I said, "Absolutely."
That's not true.
Well, obviously, Mr. Mayor, I'm not nearly as good a negotiator on my own behalf as I am on behalf of the others because you just said it was invaluable. And I didn't know that and didn't figure it out. Or it would have been much more expensive. But in any case, the reason that I so readily said yes is because I knew what I would be returning to. And that would be an absolutely incredible inventory of citizens and volunteers who care deeply about Arvada as Arvada, for its identity, for its uniqueness, for its history, for its sense of self and its sense of direction for how to go forward, which had pretty well been established. And I'll take my first shot at correcting the record now because it was the 100-person committee and a city manager named Dick Thomas who started strategic planning. Now, with all due modesty, I did write the document, and it did get an ICMA award, so... But a different city manager accepted it, as well did Vesta Miller, the mayor at the time. And secondly, I knew the, a whole lot of employees who were here, as were many of the elected officials, through good times and bad, as were many of the citizen volunteers, through good times and bad, and continued irrespective of the environment to provide professional, thoughtful, competent, dedicated, creative service to the citizens of this city, even in the most difficult times. And I, you know, I've heard the stories. It's, having come from Oakland, it's hard for me to empathize. But in any case, I think that every city does go through cycles of stability and instability. And if I provided value in that way, then that's a reflection on the entire employee staff because this is a group of folks, half of whom who live here, all of whom care deeply about this city and give their best, who strive to add value to the lives of our citizens, our visitors, to those of our property owners and our business owners and their employees every day. And they do that. They do that with extraordinary knowledge, skills, and abilities. They bring this to the job every day. Arvada is the place where Lois and I started our family. We bought our first house here. We planted our first trees. We literally took the family, our son was four years old when we left. We took him back and looked at the house where we planted trees and saw that they'd overtaken the yard, and were quite proud of that. The, Arvada has grown like, as the trees did at our first house. And it has become a mature and extraordinary city for its residents and its property owners. And for all of us who participate in that, I want to say congratulations to you. I need to say that, as I did Friday night, my failures are my own. My successes belong to all of us because city managers are stewards of a position. And we hold that position. We try to hire people who are smarter than we are, and yes, count to four. We do that all the time. And, but hire people who are smarter than we are and then just allow them to do their work because they will do it well. They will do it with excellence. They will strive to add that value every day. And so it's been my pleasure to be the steward of this position for 21 years. But it's been my pleasure to live and work with you, with the employees, with citizen volunteers for now 25 years. Arvada is a very, very special place. And I want to thank you with all of my heart for this evening, for the past 25 years, for the specialness that you've brought to my life and the lives of my family. We owe Arvada everything. Arvada owes us nothing. Thank you very much.